Good evening and welcome to the City Commission Work Session. Today is Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and I'd like to convene the meeting and call for the roll.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Here.
Commissioner Scott Wilson is absent.
He is excused, he's on vacation.
Is excused, and Mayor Denise McGriff?
Present.
All right, thank you very much. So tonight on our agenda, we have several items, but our first item under General Business is we are meeting with the Clackamas Heritage Partners Board of Directors, and I would like to turn it over to their Executive Director and have her do, ask the board members to introduce themselves for the record, and also if you would give us just a little bit of how long you've been on the board, if you're new, that's great, not, so we just want to know the tenure. So Corinne, take it away, please.
Thank you. My name's Corinne Lowenthal, I'm the Executive Director for Clackamas Heritage Partners. We operate the End of the Oregon Trail facility, as well as the Travel Oregon Welcome Center for Oregon City, and today I have most of my board here with me, and I'll let them go around the room with their tenures. My tenure is roughly eleven months.
And you have to turn the red button on. You know the drill.
So Rocky Smith, I'm on the board as a non-voting member, leads on to the council, and city council. I said city council.
I know.
City commission.
Wow.
You know, we are now officially the only jurisdiction that calls themselves a city commission, so.
I was trying to remember, I, I think.
Another distinction.
I think I've been off and on the board since I've been a city commissioner, so.
I think so.
Most of my terms, and then I worked at the End of the Oregon Trail in high school.
Yes, I remember that.
Dan Fowler, I have been on the board a couple of different times, started with the Oregon Trail Foundation as the original group that established a nonprofit group, and I believe we established that in around nineteen ninety, prior to the building of the Interpretive Center. And then when I was, maybe it was in the late eighties even, probably it was in the eighties, and then while I served as mayor from ninety-one to ninety-nine, I stepped down from the board of the Clackamas Heritage Partners, the Oregon Trail Foundation changed its name to Clackamas Heritage Partners. And then when I was not mayor in nineteen ninety-nine, I rejoined the board in two thousand, so I've been on the board now for about twenty-five additional years, so it's a pleasure to serve.
I'm Wade Byers, I've been on the board since the merger of the Oregon Trail Foundation and the Clackamas County Historical Society in about two thousand and eight.
I'm Frida Beal, I've been on the board since before two thousand and four, not sure exactly when, but prior to two thousand and four.
Hello, I'm Siobhan O'Connor, I've been on the board since two thousand and seventeen, it's a pleasure to be on the board.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
All right, excellent.
So, um. You have some opening remarks, I believe?
I do, I have just a quick little thing to kind of orient us to where we are. Essentially, our mission today is to answer questions that the City Commission might have, because I know y'all have a lot of them, we've had the opportunity to talk privately as well. My goal here is to help you to understand our operations and our vision for the coming years well enough to be able to choose to endorse us with a letter of intent and support so that we can continue to seek funding for the needed repairs and upgrades to the facilities and grounds, as well as for our own interpretive materials and programs. I openly admit, I'm not as familiar with the city processes, and I've been exceptionally grateful to all y'all and to the staff for kind of leading me in with your guidance and your wisdom. If there are course corrections, this is a great time for those, and with the information that we're hoping to gather from this meeting, it will allow us to make our own internal course corrections where they might be needed. I do have a little bit of a brief here about the next three to six years, depending on how things go, and if it's all right, I can start there.
Go right ahead.
Awesome. So one of the questions has been, what is the vision? What do you guys see going forward? And this can be either a three-year framework or a six-year framework. Year one started with stabilizing the organization, its finances and its internal operations, making some of the updates that we needed on our side, and that success is detailed in the annual report. Year two is also projected in the annual report, and it's the year that we are currently in. This is continuing to stabilize our foundation, as well as beginning to gather community input. We will be doing a lot of that in June, especially with our anniversary celebration. We'll be rolling out fundraising and marketing strategy, as well as relationship building, which will continue on through the years. We're also hoping to begin a master plan, based on the discussions we've seen with the city and their budget process. Year three is actually building some foundations. We're hoping to resupport two of the buildings on campus, which will activate, activate the unused space, and that comes with a large seed donation, as well as a large collection of inventory. Year four is hopefully when that metro grant will start modifications to the land, we will continue to leverage our funds and our fundraising that's been acquired through those years to move forward with a master, with the master plan and the results gathered from it. Year five becomes that home stretch, a lot of people have asked about the bonnets and the hoops. We do intend to recover them, and we are actively working on that. We need to work on the buildings themselves first, before we put those up. You'd be stuck in a classic situation, if we put them up, we take them down for a couple of months to do work, we put them up, we take them down, put them up, it would just be a mess. Year six would be the honest when things get delayed, because things get delayed. Now, the reality here is we could potentially blow through this in just three or four years, that is going to be highly contingent on our fundraising strategy this winter. If we are accepted into a couple of specific programs and grants, we stand to raise somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter to a full million dollars this December. So yeah, that's a little bit of a game plan for the vision. From here, I gave y'all a wealth of wonderful things, including our annual report, an example of our monthly board reporting, and all of our numbers from two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to take your questions, I'd like to know where you're curious, what can I answer? I bet you you have some financial ones that I'd love to hear.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll start out with, I won't say it's a softball question, so I understand that you had a retreat recently.
Yes.
And I guess I would like to hear about some of how that went. I know it's been a long time since you had, you had one, and I think that my hat's off to you for recognizing that those things need to happen, and you need to sort of step back, so that, that's at least the first part of my question.
We engaged Matthew Reynolds Consulting, this is a six-phase program. We are currently in the middle of phase one, the first half of the retreat happened in February, the second half will happen on June first, and EOT will actually be closed on June first, so that we can pull all of our staff into that part of the retreat. For the February one, we remained open, and we left several workers working while we internally retreated with the leadership staff. This will be where we all come together. Matthew is a community builder by trade. There is also equity, diversity and inclusion, as well as accessibility within it. What we are starting with is really looking closely at our internals. All of our materials were developed in the nineties, things have changed since the nineties, we have a much better understanding of people and community, and what he is going to help us do in the subsequent phases is backtrack through our operational materials, backtrack through our previous community outreach, and build new on both sides. Does that answer it?
Well, I'd like to hear from the board. You guys sat through it for a couple of days.
I'll just say that it was one of the most meaningful retreats that I've been a part of. We did a lot of interaction, we did a lot of really soul-searching on our language and, and our, maybe becoming aware of how important our language is and our thought processes are, and I think one of the things that I take away from that is just as we interpret the history, to be as accurate as we can, and we've always strived to do that, but also to broaden the view of the End of the Oregon Trail to include other minority groups that had a real hand in shaping our state as we move forward. So I really admire the work that Corinne has brought us, and it was a very, very meaningful retreat. That sums up my experience.
Ladies?
Even that preparation for the retreat, I thought was eye-opening, challenging us to think if, are these our thoughts, or is it something we've been programmed? And so even preparing for the retreat was meaningful, and then I think we shared a lot, learned a lot about each other, and I think helped us see beyond the obvious.
Needed a reset to expand our view of the world, and Matthew gave us that. I'm looking forward to the next phase when we'll develop our vision based on community involvement. I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
I, I don't talk, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
May I add one other comment?
Oh, absolutely, this is a discussion.
Yeah, the one thing that was really impressive to me was it, it was the first time, I think, that as a board, we were able to interact with the staff of the facility, and to really see the qualities of the individuals that are working there, and that Corinne had hired in expanding some of that staff. So not only was it a retreat to learn and to expand our mind, but it was also some really team-building, feeling like we were a group and a unit together, trying to do the best we could to interpret the End of the Oregon Trail.
I'd love to know Rocky's thoughts.
Well, as you recall, I didn't make it to the whole weekend, or to the both days, one of the days I was at school.
And we had our retreat.
I think, and we had our retreat, oh, that was it, yeah.
You weren't at school on a Saturday.
Yeah, no, yes. The reason I mentioned school was, though, is, and, and, and actually, this was at the same time as, you know, some of the, some of the school conversations, the conversations that we had in our goals retreat for, as the city, and then going to, stepping into the, the second part of this retreat was a major focus on diversity and inclusion, which, you know, we, we, I see in all parts of Oregon City and the places that I'm at, and we're still striving for that, and still working on that, in the world that we're living in today, which I think is amazing. So it, it, stepping into the retreat was kind of a continuation of the discussions that we were having in, in several different places in this community. It was for me also a restart, I think the restart happened before the retreat, when we met this one, when we hired Corinne. So a huge change, and I, I mentioned this, our commission meeting about talking about in the beginning of what was going on at the End of the Oregon Trail, and kind of how I feel like it has shifted the vision, and shifted what we thought the future of the End of the Oregon Trail Center could be, and the building itself, and whether or not the building would stay or go. It re- rejuvenated, reactivated this group, I think in, in a lot of ways, and not only just the mentality of the group as a whole, but the retreat got us to work together, which we don't often do, we, in our regular meetings. In, in frequent, in, in past years, CHP didn't always meet regularly, and, and it's a group of people that are extremely busy, and I remember our conversations about how we were going to even attempt a retreat, because all of us were like, well, two days, and how are we going to do that day, and how are we going to do this day? It happened somehow, somehow, the next part of it, but, but actually being able to have a dialogue with each other and not, and I said this, I've said this before in some of our city meetings, sometimes we get in these meetings where we have a set agenda, and we have a set timeframe, and we don't get to really talk to each other and get to know each other and work with each other, which is so much more powerful, and, and actually leads to better decisions and making an organization thrive, and so it, it was a lot. It was a lot, and it's still a lot, because we're supposed to be continuing this, the things that we've been doing every day since then, and, and continuing on until June, so I, I, I think it was very beneficial.
Fantastic. Either you have some questions? Yes, I'm looking at you, my colleagues.
Yeah, I guess I've got one question. So we have in our proposed budget, set aside hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, for master plan for the, that facility, how is, how do you see Clackamas Heritage Partners working with the city in that master planning process?
I think the community stakeholder engagement is going to be a place that we can really work with the city, by leveraging through our networks, and especially with the help of Malahood Territories and Travel Oregon, I believe we can reach a larger segment of the city than what's kind of normally involved. One of the things that I hear a lot is that I'm a new face, it's the same people and same thoughts. I think this process is going to, when we come together and collaborate, result in a lot more voices than have ever participated in this discussion, so I think that's going to be a real core to it. Outside of that, we've already started some of these things, Thomas and I worked together to complete that metro grant, and it was fascinating to read the final copy that he submitted, to see my language, to see the grant writer's language, to see Thomas's language, and to see those little flavors from other people within the city. That's a lot of what we're looking at when we talk about community building, how do we bring all these voices together into the room and make them cohesive, make them collaborative, and find the heart of what we're looking for? I think that's where our partnership is really going to shine.
So let me backtrack on your question, so we already have an adopted master plan for the End of the Oregon Trail, so if we're going to be doing any planning, it seems to me that we start with what we already have on the books, and we amend it to make it be what it needs to be, so, and I'm not sure you've ever, have you ever read the End of the Oregon Trail master plan? I'm, I don't know if you have.
Are you talking about the old one?
I'm talking about the one that's currently in effect right now that we have.
Well, I've, I've read that, one that talked about enactors and reenactors in a village.
This is the one that the city adopted, I think, did we do it during your? Well, yeah, it was, it's a late nineties document, but I mean, there's still some valuable, you know, things in there, and it, and basically, when we approved the, when the city approved the development for the hotel, the master plan was used to talk about the relationship between the properties adjacent and how they were relating to it, so I'm just asking the question about the existing plan, not, I mean, I'm familiar with it, I actually have a copy of it at home, but when we talk about, you know, the money in our budget for the, for a master plan, what are we talking about? Is it just facilities, or is it operations? Is it all of the above? I mean, if you want to come up, please do, since you're going, Tom is going to be intimately involved in it.
Truth.
So I mean, is that what, is that what we're envisioning, that we would be using, you know, that money for?
I think so. I also read that plan, I've read so much historical information about this.
It's a beautiful plan, I mean, the illustrations are gorgeous, let's face that.
This is probably the reason I brought that big billboard back in January, is to hearken back to that plan.
Can I share one thing?
Sure, go ahead.
That original plan was really a vision.
Right.
Of the area, quite a large vision, to be honest with you, on properties that weren't even owned or controlled by either the Oregon Trail Foundation or the city.
I still believe.
So it was really a vision document, it, I don't know if you'd call it a plan, but it was a vision document. I think for what Corinne, speaking to him, what we could look at in the future would be the site of, that's an existing, as the park site. That would be enough to really focus on and to become intimate in a planning process into that, so.
I mean, there's still stuff in the, in the original.
Oh, it was awesome, there's great ideas, I mean, I think.
Again, it's, it has, it's, it's, it's the foundation to build upon, so, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just, Tom Kissinger, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation, I would just kind of echo that, it's more of a refinement plan, looking at all these existing plans, looking at the space that we actually own and control, that we can build on, and what can we do on that site? What can we do to improve the existing space? So, you know, the term master plan is kind of used interchangeably, a lot of the times I would call it more of a refinement.
Yeah, that's, that makes more sense to me, yeah, I mean, I personally, I mean, I'm, I'm, this is going to be heresy, but if some development on the other end of it just kind of went away, I wouldn't be upset about that, because to me, that vision was very powerful, that vision had a lot to say about where we thought it might go, and again, yes, we know that the properties that were involved in it were not under, under the city's control, or the Trail Center's control, but it was still something that we could, you know, that we could all hang our hat on, it was something that the community could look at and go, okay, we think that this is a great idea, you know, we hadn't gotten to how we got there, but again, it was thinking big, it was thinking bigger than, you know, maybe we were really able to accomplish, and so, you know, I still think that there's a lot of validity in some of the parts of it.
I.
There was a mayor back then that thought a little big sometimes. I will say that if there is any parcel that might be considered as a future parcel, would be the Steino LPs.
Yes.
It's at the same elevation as the park, and I've often thought, and I don't know if it's for sale, I haven't talked to Stein family. Yeah, is that if it's contiguous, so if there ever was an expansion of the park that really enabled a master plan to be even more creative, that that would be the only parcel that, you know, you might want to look at, so just a, a thought, and others may have other thoughts, but it's just something that I would want to put out.
Well, no, I think that's a great idea. I'm in close contact with the, the holder, the holder of the, the deed holder, and I have talked to her about it, just as they were deciding to sell the business, and I know why she has, has hung on to it. There might be the opportunity to open a conversation about it becoming part of the park property, so to speak. about it becoming part of the park property, so to speak. I know she is not interested in having it redeveloped at this point in time for something that's beyond that. And she's been very demonstrative to me about that, very clear.
Thank you, Tom.
Did you want to add anything before we get to Adam? I'm kind of more into... I mean, I know the wonderful thing she's going to say. I'm really interested in hearing from you guys. You're the board. You direct this person. So I'm interested in hearing about your direction and your thoughts about where we're going to go with a refinement plan or anything else you want to talk about. And just move your thing a little closer to you two. There you go.
I'm excited as far as trying to include, you know, the library piece that has the Black Pioneer display, trying to include as many people, as many contributors to our history, which I think is something that we're striving to do. I'm excited to see the growth of the kids visiting. That's really exciting to know that we've got kids every day, like lots of kids every day. And I took my grandkids there last fall, and my seven-year-old granddaughter was dragging her feet, didn't want to go, and she had a wonderful time. You know, we weren't even there five minutes, and she was engaged, and that's what we're looking for.
Awesome.
I'm very excited about the history component of it, but I'm more excited about the community involvement. When we take what has been strictly a history museum and we expand it to include community events like we're doing, I think that really broadens it because the most exciting places, museums I've been to have a component of living history, and they have a component of the community involvement. So I'm very excited about that aspect of it, particularly in this day and age when we have such political divides. Bringing all the people together and respecting the environment while we do it, it'll be a wonderful time.
Adam?
Yes, thank you. Well, first, I was glad to see in the materials that were provided and just from what I've heard tonight, the focus on diversifying funding streams. I think that's really important. And I really appreciated seeing that and hearing about the Metro grant that you're working with in partnership with the city for. So I was glad to hear about that. A lot of people know my feelings toward Metro, but at the very least, having those dollars come back to Oregon City would be a benefit for all of us. And so I really am crossing my fingers for that. This was already touched upon very briefly, and I've heard some stuff about it. And there are actually two things that I was hoping to get some updates on that I think would be helpful for the broader community as well. If you could talk about what strengthening school partnerships has looked like for you. I remember going all throughout K-12 in Oregon City and never really stepping a foot in their... in a school-related capacity outside of when my parents would take me and we would go outside of that. But I don't recall ever going there for a school field trip, which I always felt was a real missed opportunity. And I know that our park staff is working hard to do the same thing for the Erma Tinger House and for other historical landmarks. And so I would appreciate hearing about what those partnerships are looking like for you and then the Curtis wagons as well.
Well, I'll take these two at a time. First one, when it comes to strengthening schools. One of the most concerted things I did when I came through the door was figure out why they weren't coming in the first place. A big part of that was specifically related to us not accepting purchasing orders. We do that now, and that brought Portland Public Schools back in spades. One of the other things that was desperately needed was an update to our lesson plans and materials, most of them pre-existing from the 90s. And that's the part where I'm wondering if y'all will let me invite somebody up to the table to talk a little bit more about this. Can I ask our Director of Education, Dr. Xena, to step up over to the table?
While she's doing that, I just want to applaud Corinne for her ability to involve other people and hire qualified staff that leads to a broader use of the facility. And you're going to hear from an example here. Corinne had enough vision and enough gumption to step out and make those strategic hires that lead to what we're going to be talking about. And so both, I'm just so impressed with both these people.
Just your name and...
I'm Dr. Xena, the Director of Education at the End of the Oregon Trail.
Is that your first name, last name?
My only name.
Oh, your only name, okay. Perfect, thank you for clarifying. We got to get that on the record.
Absolutely. So one of the things that I did is I immediately started aligning all of our workshops to the Oregon Department of Education's 2024 Social Sciences standards and to the tribal histories and shared histories standards so that we would actually have something that was educationally sound and based. And then also updating our workshops to be more hands-on and hands-on curriculum so that it was more student-centered curriculum and project-based type of curriculum. Additionally, I reached out to our schools, our public schools, so that they would actually know we existed, which some of them didn't know, even our schools, our neighboring schools. So now, we had almost 50% of the schools in West Lynn, Gladstone, Oregon City, Lake Oswego, and Tuolton, as well as North Clackamas, our elementary schools in attendance this year. So at least a third or fourth grade class in all of those areas.
Is it fair to say that our school tours were fully booked and now we're seeing where we can actually double book? Could you like mention some of that in the numbers that you've seen? Because it's quite impressive.
April and May were completely booked on a daily basis, and our schools came... Well, we were booked, completely booked. I guess is the best way to say it. At over... We were at 100% capacity for both months, and March was at 80%.
Yeah. Necessitating another hire. We had so many school kids.
I've had to work a lot more than I was supposed to, which is great. I'm grateful to have.
Great. Did you get... The second part of this question was about the... We know that unfortunately, the Curtis Foundation is deaccessioning much of their inventory, and that, you know, has to do with age and, you know, who's going to take care of this and all of that. And I know that that's causing a great deal of angst, but they have been generous to suggest this... A couple of their items would come to the Trail Center?
All the wagons that are currently in the building. So there's a peddler's wagon and there's the sleigh in the visitor's center. Those we retain. The sleigh's switching out. In addition to that, there are 21 wagons that we will be taking in. This is what we were talking about when we say rehabbing underneath the visitor's center in the administrative building. We'd like to almost build garage bays under that for 365 days a year, 24/7 viewing. With that, with those 21 wagons, they are really the best of the best. Everything else is going to auction on June 6, and that auction is going to help with the seed money for the construction that I've talked about. We're hoping at least 10% of the total cost will come from that auction. It could be more. Some of the high notes, if you will. The 1840s immigrant wagon obviously already moved over to EOT. That was to make sure it didn't get damaged while they were working on everything. Some other great ones are an original street sweeper, also an original fire pumper. We have both a white and a black hearse because there's two sides of that story. What else? There's a large four-seat black sleigh. There's, I think I said the fire pumper already. There are several stagecoaches that are roadworthy, that can actually go out right now on the road. We're still kind of pinpointing horses for those and chatting through what that might look like with transportation. What's another good one we've got coming? There's a lot of little things in that too, like lanterns for the lighting for the space. We won't need to invest a whole lot in some of the decorative aspects like lighting because that's coming with the collection. Oh, the Wells Fargo stagecoach is another one, complete with the original rollsign.
I'm surprised they didn't give that to the Wells Fargo Museum, which exists. Oh, did they? Oh, that's sad.
They did. But I also am in close communication with Wells Fargo about that, and they will be involved as we move forward.
If I may respond to that. The director at the Clackamas County Historical Society used to be the director of the Wells Fargo.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
And something else they're also going to be giving us is their entire STEM education program package. We've incorporated some of that into our educational programming already.
Well, I am thrilled to hear that. The last thing I just want to touch on, just to comment, is that I'm really looking forward to what this community engagement process will look like for the master planning slash refinement. I think a lot of people, especially as we've had more people moving to the city who may not have grown up here and experienced that in their childhood like I did, may not know what kind of an asset it is for our community. And so being able to make sure that our residents know that they actually have a stake in the future of this facility is very empowering and hopefully inspires people to actually take advantage of this community resource even more so than is already the case. So I'm really looking forward to that.
I hope they all show up on June 17, a random idle Tuesday. We're having a huge community picnic. We are not supplying food. We're hoping everyone will bring their picnic blankets and their picnic baskets. We are also going to have a drone, and we're going to pick the best blanket from above. We're hoping to fill the green with the community. We'll have surveys, QR codes, all kinds of data collection methods available at the time. And we want community conversation. That's the whole point of the evening, is community conversation.
What's the date of that?
June 17. We'll have a little bit of formality around 4 o'clock. We'll be working with the tribes on that programming, Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron, specifically. And then from there, we go into just a lovely community picnic.
Let's pray for good weather because having a picnic in the rain is not any fun. One of the things that, among many, but I will say it's something that concerns me is, you know, as you're aware, we are in the beginning stages of the creation of the Destination Marketing Management Organization, and they are in the process of, thank you very much, of looking for an executive director. And I guess I'll add for a nod, so is... Have they decided to advertise that yet?
Yes.
Okay, so that's moving forward. So two of the things that I have noticed, not just in Oregon City but statewide. So you can have the best assets that you could ever have in your community. And one of the things that I find very frustrating about Oregon City and Oregon in general, the Oregon one, is why do you only teach history in the fourth grade, which is stupid? So let me just say that. The school system that I grew up in, you got it from the minute you walked in the door till you graduated, so you had it every year. I think that we're doing a disservice to our community because they don't know about this place. The other thing is that trying to convince people in this town to support the assets that they have. You and I have had this conversation, Rocky and Dan, for, we have had this for 25-plus years. Every time somebody tells me, oh, I thought, you know, fill in the blank of whatever asset it is. Oh, I thought that was closed. I just, you know, I would... I could fund a museum myself. And I'm just thinking, if we can't convince the people that are already here about the assets that they have in their community, it doesn't help us when we go out to talk to other people. I mean, other people seem to know more about, you know, what's going on and the assets we have than are here. And so, I mean, it's... I think that that's going to be a big challenge because, you know, maybe you have a, you know... Show your Oregon City pride and come to the Trail Center, you know, to whatever, some sort of an event that's ongoing so that people do it. I mean, I got yesterday, I said, oh, we're having our first city festival. Oh, really? You're having a first city festival? When did you start that? And I, you know, it's like, you know, you kind of had that out-of-body experience where you're kind of over here going, are they really asking me that question? Anyway, and then as nicely as you can, you say, yes, we've been doing it for, you know, 30 years, and this is what we do, blah, 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 blah. So that's just... I'm just throwing that out there, you know? We have got to somehow help people understand that they can go more than once because they say, oh, I already saw it. You know, I've seen it. I don't need to go back again. The other thing, Frida, that you said, I'm just taking little notes for myself, that I think you said something very, very thought-provoking. You said you felt that the retreat helped change the mindset, not what we had already have ingrained in us, but looking beyond that. And, you know, those of you that know me, I look at our history as a book. And I'm talking about our statewide history. So we are working diligently, all of us, to add the pages back into those chapters of the book that are missing. So it's always been there. So I think we don't want to use terms like, well, minority people who have been involved. Everybody's been involved from the beginning. We just, in many cases, many of the people in the school system did not get those chapters. Some of us know those chapters. We're waiting for them to be put back because we know them. We've studied them. We know all about it. So I think, you know, a recognition from that standpoint is critical to getting to the topic that you talked about in terms of diversifying, talking about it. It's not just an add-on. It is part of the whole. And that's what we have to help people understand, that, you know, there were people here long before any of us. And I think back to Pam Hayden finding that cabin that they think... Wait, yeah, has something to do with the Russians being in this area. And, you know, to me, it's completely plausible that, yes, they were here. She just is having a hard time documenting it, but all signs lead to that. So it's just those sorts of things that are, you know, that are critical to getting people to understand. And even talking about the negative sides of our history because there's a whole story, and we don't want to just talk about all the wonderful things that we know. And think about our conversation last night with our students when they talked about, I'm not going to bring up the whole topic, but we have, you know, in the places that I work at, we have a heritage of our first territorial governor. And I don't want to erase the history of why he was here, but I think people need to know that other side of that story about, you know, he was really more opportunistic, which, you know, people come out, came out here, and they could change their whole identity, change who they were, and they could be somebody else. That does cause problems later on when you're trying to do your genealogy if you had a different name because some incident that happened back east. But so I think that that's something... I think that the board under Gail was moving in that direction, and now you've just moved it beyond that. So, you know, I applaud you. Anything else, gentlemen? Board?
One thing, and you just said it, and I didn't want to leave this meeting without mentioning Gail. Gail was a stalwart for us. She worked tirelessly for many, many years, and we're just building upon that. And I'm thankful for the transition and how it occurred and that it did occur. There's some really exciting things as we move forward, so. And I really appreciate just the few minutes that we have to really talk about this and for you guys to hear from us. It's really good.
So I think we need to make it sort of not, I mean, not every month, but, you know, maybe twice a year or something like that because, you know, we are invested in it. It is, you know, I know that we don't want to like put the hammer down, but, you know, it is a city property. And, you know, every so often doesn't... Every so often, somebody brings up Kelly Field to me.
Oh, yeah.
And there are people here who have no idea about that. And, you know, when you get to the point to where, you know, I think, oh, gosh, I'm starting to sound, I'm starting to be like the Rocky of my... Rocky, me like Rocky Smith because we both still study. We both still find out new information. We both still are looking. And we come across things and, you know, I'll call him up and say, hey, guess what I found? You know, did you know about that? And, you know, it's just fun to compare that because it's something that really gets us very excited when we find things out that, you know, we think, wow, we didn't know that. So anyway, go ahead, Rocky. If you'd like... So anyway, go ahead, Rocky, if you'd like to close it.
Yeah, I just want a couple of things. I think talking about the wagons and also talking about the school groups, part of the support that is going to be needed from CHP to the city is an awareness that, in order to build the capacity that we see with the school groups, it is adding collections and adding to the, adding to the collection of the building, but also the accessibility of that collection. So when we start talking about the back of the building, remember the first step really of having a trail in the back of the building, which, by the way, was under Gail's watch, and an idea that really spurred the school group discussion, which is because the problem with the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center as it was built is three buildings that are essentially theaters, and if you have one theater being used, you're stuck. You don't have the ability to have other groups come through and in. And so part of this vision is to make those individual buildings multi-use or at least accessible in various ways, whether there's a show going on or not, that you could bypass one wagon. If you were in one wagon, in a middle wagon, and there was something going on either side, how can you get through that?
Right, exactly.
And then so, under Gail's watch and this board envisioning the trail through the back of the center, which added some small exhibits and some places that school groups could learn and gather and for lunch and for education. But adding to that and making that more accessible and creating a space for this new collection of wagons kind of compounds that even more and allows a lot more ability to bring school groups in. And I think what's really happening is some of the things that most of us have been complaining for a long time about is how these different organizations work together. Well, it's kind of happening already. It's happening before the DMO was put in place to do this. And what we're seeing is, you know, school groups at the End of the Oregon Trail in record numbers. We're seeing school groups and partnerships between Erma Tanger, McLaughlin House, and Museum of the Oregon Territory, which are working, you know, together to have those school groups increased. But then the next piece is how do we take, you know, small units and the one large unit of the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center and make that work where you can do a rotation that kind of encompasses that whole experience? Because right now, the capacity at the End of the Oregon Trail, if you have a group of 100 or 200 students, that's not an easy group to manage going up to the museum houses. And so there's some way, so there's still a small disconnect between those, that rotation is a full experience. But I think it's doable, and I think at some point with added capacity or the ability for the End of the Oregon Trail to host multiple groups, you could see subgroups going up to other locations. And if the DMO is in place at that point, that, they even adds to that.
I'm glad you mentioned that because that's, we want to try to capture some smaller groups at the Holmes House. I mean, we can't, we cannot accommodate 20 people.
Well, and how can that expand to, you know, not just the Stevens Crawford House, but Mood itself or some of the other locations?
Yeah, so I agree. That is a discussion that I have been trying to feed into them for the last 20 years I've been there.
So I think this is the foundation to starting that process, and I will add that even though Clackamas Heritage Partners may not be asking for money outside the budget at this point, it may happen a little bit, but remember how much that, how much it would cost us to tear that building down. That's a huge expense, and we were all ready to do that.
No, where did that, I don't know where that came from.
Oh, well, it's come from at least twice. No, I know, but that was, that, well, it was a topic that came up in our previous commission, but in recent years, staff as well. So nobody knew what the plan was, and to be quite honest, even as a board, I don't think we knew what the ability was to save that building. And so I think that has changed, and we're going forward, so I think it's exciting.
All right.
One last thing, I really want to piggyback on what Rocky just said about really the queuing up and the movement of people and the systems you put in place and why it's important as we look to the future. If you can envision the development of Willamette Falls complete, and now we have access to the falls, it's estimated that's going to bring a million people a year to the city, which is half of the number that goes to Montenoma Falls, which is about 2 million plus a year. If we were able to capture 10% of that and divert that 10% number to the End of the Oregon Trail, that's 100,000 people a year. That's three times, more than three times what we have now. So what we're looking at is how can that people movement take place and be a continual flow even while there is a movie going on? And we have a fabulous movie, if you haven't seen it, really looking at how the movement of the Oregon Trail impacted the Native American community here through their eyes, and we developed that through COVID. It's a moving movie to see, and they have their hands and words completely immersed in that, in that movie. But I think that's the thinking, that's the forward thinking that we have as a board and that Corinne is carrying out with her staff, is how can we not only make it better today, but with an eye to the future of an increased traffic, which is going to happen maybe five, six, seven years from now? So it's really important that that take place.
But the traffic, again, needs to be dispersed throughout the other assets as well. I mean, again, as I tell people, you come here to see the real deal. It's not a fake place. It's not things being moved. I mean, I love Mission Mill, but, you know, part of what I don't like about Mission Mill is it's like a little Disneyland village, even though you get to see that. They're not on their original sites, they're, you know, and I know why they were done that way, I understand it, but still, it's not the same. And when people come to Oregon City, you can stroll through the same places that our forefathers stroll through, because it's all still intact primarily.
And with the visitor information center there and the state visitor center, those, the people that are working there, we're encouraging them to not see the End of the Oregon Trail. We want them to see the city of Oregon City, like, we want them to see the falls. We might be a first stop of an RV because there's parking.
Sure.
Or a bus, or, yeah.
And maps, yes. People love maps.
Bus groups that comes through, but, I mean, you listen to the people in there, they're talking about the entire community. Sure, see what's here while you're here, but don't forget to go to the Erma Tanger House, go to the McLaughlin House, walk that district, go to the Museum of the Oregon Territory, look over the bluff at the falls, walk along, you know, from the elevator down to the VFW. So those, that's on the lips of the people that's in the interpretive center. So, yes, it happens to be that that's where the interpretive center is sitting next to the visitor center, but as you said, Mayor, it's to see the entire city. It really is, so.
Thank you very much for attending with us today, and we're going to move on. We've got some other exciting topics that we need to talk about.
Thank you very much for having us. We're going to actually step into the lobby and complete our-
You have to have a meeting, yes.
12th consecutive meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Nice to meet you, nice to see you. I'll see you again soon. All right, so next on our agenda, we have local streets, street volume standards study, wow, local street volume standard study, street identification. Ooh, that's a mouthful. I'm not going to say that three times real fast.
Very gross city commissioners.
And this is the second time we've talked about this, correct?
Correct. I just have a very brief update tonight and kind of confirmation of our street list. The last time we met with the city commission in November to talk about average daily trips and local street volume, the commission kind of gave direction to staff to go do research and come up with better data to kind of inform how the city commission in the future could potentially add a local street volume standard when land use applications come in to look at potentially using it as proportional mitigation for safety. And so we have no data. We do street counts on our minor arterials and collectors, but we don't have data on local streets. So we reached out to DKS, our transportation consultants, to do a street count study, and that memo from Aquila Herd Ravage is in your packet, which lays out 18 streets we identified around the city as well as a map attached. You'll kind of see that map here, but that's available on your agenda packet.
We didn't get a big one like that.
No, but I can pass this around if you want. And actually, I will because I don't need it, if you want to see. So the goal is to take 48-hour counts of up to 20 local streets before the end of the school year, so end of May is our goal. We want to have that count done while it's a standard weekday in the city. And we reached out, and both public work staff and planning staff worked with Rhea, with DKS, identified 18 streets that we thought kind of were geographically mixed, had a mix of kind of street type and condition, and were local streets that connected to other local streets, not like a very small cul-de-sac. So we came up with 18 streets that we thought were good representations around the city. We can do up to 20. And so this is really a check-in with the city commission. Are there any that we missed? Now, we will, we do have, you'll see on the map, there are highlighted colors of our collector streets and our minor arterials. Those are not involved here, we're just looking at local streets. And so in the map, sorry, the second page, you'll see the list, and those are identified. So really, tonight is just letting you know that we're moving forward, is a chance for the commission, if you want to add a street that you think is missing or a characteristic of a street that's missing, I'll forward that on to Rhea, but we are moving forward by the end of May to get that count.
Are these all, I, and my, I guess my question is, these seem to be all local streets?
That's the idea, that we're getting data from local streets.
Well, just one little tiny nitpicky thing. So when you list a street, put whether it's a street, avenue, road, drive, like on Cleveland.
Yeah, I think this was a very quick-
Yeah, it's a quick list. Some of them have like Walnut Grove Way, and, you know, Hunter Avenue. It should say what it is. Having lived on a street that I sometimes get mail for the city of Portland, because people just put Washington and they don't put that it's in Oregon City, so I get mail from southeast Washington Street.
Yeah, this was a quick check-in with Rhea, but, yeah, the final report, we'll use our formal process.
You know, one of the things that I'm sure you're very aware, we get lots of requests for, well, if you just put up a stop sign, you know, that'll help slow the traffic down. And I said, "Have you seen people stop at stop signs? It's like a rolling thing. They really don't always come to a full stop." So I said, "That is not going to solve your problem, it's just going to create a false sense of security that somebody actually stops at a stop sign." But I think, I mean, I think this is a good start. I think there are others that probably could be added along the way, but I think this is a good place to start, right off the bat. Any questions? Just speak up.
A comment and a question. Just for the record, I do live on one of these streets, but I didn't ask for it to be added to this.
I wasn't making that assumption.
No, 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 I didn't say you did.
No, I don't think anybody was.
I just want to be clear. The question, if we're looking for one to add that gets a lot of traffic, and maybe the street name changes, so I want to be, make sure, but alongside, between the high school and the apartments, is that still Myers Road, or does it change at the park and become something else before it hits Beaver Creek? Is it still Myers? Well, that might, that might be one to add.
That's not a local street.
That is not a local street?
It's a collector.
Okay, okay.
I know, there's got to be a way to look at not just the classification of local streets, but where we know that there are through streets that have those types of issues.
And this is really just to come back with data, right? This is what we're seeing, we'll release back. There's probably going to be quite a range, and that's the next step conversation, but we can't get to there unless, until we actually gather the data.
So what's the, go ahead, Adam.
Oh, thank you. This may have just been me not catching it, but I did not see the fiscal impact that were from the contract.
Oh, sure, and I don't have that on here. This was something that Aquila Herd Ravage did before she left. I don't think it's a lot, it's really just putting down tubes for 48 hours. We're going to do, it's a two weeks, half are going to go in week one and half are going to go in week two.
Okay.
What's the issue with Barlow Drive?
Barlow Drive?
It's up in Barlow Crest subdivision?
Yeah, I think it was one that was chosen in the sense it was connecting up to other streets in the subdivision, but I believe it's a local street.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know it's a local street, I just didn't think it had that much volume.
I think we were just trying to find geographical, and also you'll find some local streets will have much lower volume and some will have higher, and that the whole idea is to get the breadth of the data.
That one is, is the one that was going to go sideways if Park Place Crossing had gone forward without the connection to Redland. So it's, the projected traffic count on that street is-
On Barlow? No, I don't think it's-
Oh, it's on the other side, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're thinking of Oak Tree Terrace.
My mistake, yeah, right, I'm thinking of Oak Tree Terrace.
That's on the, I don't know what, the E-SO.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, that doesn't go to Redland Road unless it-
I'm sorry, it's Oak Tree Terrace is the one that was going to be so impacted by that.
Go ahead.
So just a couple of comments. First of all, I really appreciate all the work that our staff put into this. You can tell from all of the materials that have been provided that they really were looking into the feasibility of this. And given that the fiscal impact is going to be minimal, as you say, I'm totally comfortable moving forward with this, but with that being said, I still have concerns about what's outlined in Ms. Richter's memo about the enforceability of any of these. And so while I am supportive of us looking into getting the data so that we can just better understand the grand scheme of things, I still go back and forth between what I would like to do versus what I think we'll be legally allowed to do and whether we're going to be wasting money in the search of that. Because, I mean, we're just talking about what the current planning and transportation land use landscape is right now, and who knows what the next legislative session will bring? There already was a bill this session from the governor that originally included taking out the ability to require certain frontage improvements. That has been amended, but that was in one of the governor's priority bills, and I don't see how that goes away. There are a lot of people in the developer community who will continue telling the people that are in charge, who desperately want to address the housing crisis, as we all do, that if only you did this, this, and this, then it'll all be fixed, which we know is not necessarily the case, so.
And has not been the case.
Yes, so all of that to say, I'm looking forward to getting this data and then having a deeper discussion about what we can do that might actually make a difference for our community members versus something that we can just say, you know, it makes us feel better that we have these numbers in our guidelines, but who cares because the developer is going to do what they want to do.
Well, I think you've got in your, in the memo talks about, I mean, I think we should consider, after we get some data, of looking at citywide traffic calming. I think, as you know, that's one of the things we hear the most about amongst other things, but it's in the top three. And enforcement alone is not going to solve the problem. I think that in order to promote more livability here, we need to, you know, we need to look at these things. And again, as I said to somebody yesterday, I said, "Yeah, nobody wants you speeding through their neighborhood, but then when you go to somebody else's neighborhood, you know, what are you doing? You know, the general traveling public." And it, you know, it gets a little scary.
I think this also serves, I mean, serves as a basis.
Basis, yeah.
For not only giving us a toolbox of traffic calming measures that can be utilized, but it also gives you, hopefully, the justification to exact it, right? You're right. You know, who knows what's going to come out of legislature, but at least it would say, we've done the work and we can justify this. Anybody can challenge it, but, you know, instead of, oh, let's do a curb bump out here, let's do pillows here, let's do a roundabout here, like, you know, there would be some more probably consistency in the improvements and exactions through this process.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, thank you for bringing, I was going to bring it up as well, Adam, but thank you for, you know, and looking at the memo from our legal counsel, I think we can definitely take these things into consideration. I've had the opportunity to twice driving in the countryside in Italy, and they have an extensive use of roundabouts. And it really does slow the traffic down. Now, they also have narrower roads than we do, so that's something that we don't have. But I think it's, it's something that we've looked at in terms of, you know, giving the illusion that the road is narrower, because when it is, if there's a narrower road, people do slow down. I've noticed in the last three weeks that the new paving on Holmes Lane has accelerated the speed back to where it was before it was. I mean, when it had all the lumps and bumps in it, people slowed down. And I said, I said jokingly to Dana, I said, you know, you should just leave it, because that makes that neighborhood much more livable. And we don't need to have people driving down, you know, a 747 runway. But unfortunately, it's going to be paved and the speed volumes are going to go right back up to where they were. And it's been great having not have to deal with that. But I think the things that are, you know, the traffic calming measures that we've used in the last five years are, they're great. I think moving the trailer around is good. I think that unfortunately, I wish people, when they see it, would slow down, but some of them drive really fast or see how fast they, how high they can get the thing to go. I've seen that. But the speed table, I think, helps. I think some of the new signage that we have where it's a fluorescent yellow around these stop signs, stop signs and the traffic signals, so that when you're there with your signal, it flashes and it gives you a visual cue that you better be stopping. I think that's, that's helpful. I think permanent radar speed signs do help to a certain degree. Like I said, I watched the one near my house and I saw it go up to 45 the other day. I was out working in the yard. It was just incredible that they were racing. So I think you guys have done a great job, and I think we'll look forward to getting some of the data, and that will be helpful. Does anybody have any other comments on the options to consider, the one through four? So if you can look at those, it's on the, for page four of the memo.
Which memo? I'm sorry.
It's the, it's the memo dated November 4th. It's got the four options. I think we should still, you know, be looking at some of those things. So one is, should the city require traffic calming in new developments part of land use approval? Should city budget for traffic calming solutions in existing neighborhoods? Should the city add analysis of traffic to the next TSP, updating lower volume roadways in addition to safety improvements, et cetera? Should the city consider a citywide traffic calming program and allocate the necessary resources to fund such a program? I think we can get data on all of those.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking for guidance tonight. I think it was just kind of laying out kind of where we envision this going as part of a discussion as we get better info.
I mean, I just want to get some, a read on how people are, how we're thinking, you know, all of those are valid things to be looking at.
And I think getting the data is going to be really helpful, because when that came before the planning commission and we knew what was going to happen to that street, but we had, we had no idea what does that number mean?
Right.
Yeah.
So this will be really helpful. I appreciate it's going forward.
And what's interesting is that you might actually see streets with much higher volumes that feel safer because of speed.
Right.
Or lack thereof.
Right.
Right? That's what's going to, that's, I think, part of this that, you know, is going to be a little bit hard, is that the trips themselves may not be the issue. It may be the street design, the speed, the distance between stop signs, the distance between, you know, you've got 32 feet of pavement, nobody parks on the street, people fly down the street, right? You've got 32 feet of pavement with cars parked on both sides and multiple intersections, people slow down, right? I mean, it's just human nature because of the unease and the uncertainty of what's there.
Unless they think there's an extra lane there and they rear-end your car on the street.
So this has been kind of, since it came out of the planning commission, you know, our previous community development director, Aquila Hurd Ravitch, kind of worked on it in conjunction with Dana Webb and our public works department. With this data, collection complete, kind of planning staff will be more of a support for public work, so you probably will see Josh Wheeler and Dana Webb kind of in this next stage as we move towards the kind of recommendations and the implementation.
Well, I think it's really important to bring the planning component in.
Oh, yeah.
Keep those engineers, you know, on the, on the reality level.
This is going to be more, will be a support service.
That's right. You'll remind them it's not about the numbers, it's about livability.
So we're going to move forward with 18 streets as identified, and we'll get back to you sometime later this summer.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Parks, come on down. Or come on over, because we're not going down. And of course, now, Scott, you've memorized the Parks Master Plan, Clackmet Park Master Plan, you just know it all off the top of your head. Okay, all right, there will be a quiz later.
So, good evening. Scott Archer, Parks and Recreation Director, and also Tom Kissinger, Deputy Parks and Rec. Director. So the purpose tonight with this is to give you an update on the final adoption process for the Parks Master Plan. As you know, the, we, over the last two-plus years, the city went through the process of developing an updated master plan, extensive public engagement, and lots of, lots of work with, with the team. This, the plan was presented to you as a commission and you approved it, but it didn't, wasn't an adoption, it was just an approval of the plan as it, as it was presented last year. And so now the final step is that we, we need to ask you to adopt it as an ancillary plan to the city's comprehensive plan. And, you know, we've been working with, our Parks and Rec team have been working with the planning team, particularly Christina Robertson Gardner, who was just up here to move it through this process. Last night in this chamber, the planning commission approved that, which now then moves that to you for the final, for the final action. And we are planning to present this to you for formal adoption next week at your May 21 meeting. So in advance of this, we just wanted to take this opportunity to give you a review, a briefing. Tom's going to walk through a few slides just to remind you and to present some of the key information from that. And then we, of course, would be happy to help answer any questions in advance of the formal process next week. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom to walk through the slides.
Yeah, and part of this is just to recognize that it's been a while since we've seen this, so just a reminder of some of the documents, and we'll talk a little bit about the Parks inventory as well. So just a reminder of the process, this project began in April 2022. We had extensive public engagement and community input over a two-year period that included town halls, work with PrAC, work sessions between PrAC and City Commission, and a variety of listening sessions with different stakeholders during the process. The final report was approved by City Commission on June 5th, 2024. We'll share a little bit of the highlights. So throughout this process, using statistically valid survey that was mailed at random to members of the community, as well as a community survey that was put out through Survey Monkey, our consultants identified some priorities for investment. If you look at the actual plan itself, there's a very large chart that outlines high, medium, low priorities for investment, but we've highlighted the high priorities here, and those are really focused on trails, water access, the idea of an outdoor amphitheater, indoor walking or jogging track, large community parks, open space and conservation areas, fenced dog parks, and small neighborhood parks. So those were identified as the highest priorities. The consultants worked to develop a level of service analysis, so this is based on recommended service levels. These numbers are published by the National Recreation and Parks Association annually, based on their kind of provider survey. Those numbers were adjusted for our local service area. The way the consultant developed this, they looked at the land that is currently controlled by the city of Oregon City through their Parks and Recreation Department, as well as other service providers, school districts, things like that, that have open space that's available to the public, to create a total inventory of developed facilities. And then it looks at the current service level based upon a population, which in 2022 was estimated at 37,967. It compares the current service level to the recommended service levels that are outlined by NRPA to identify whether our needs meet those standards or do not meet those standards. Some areas where a need exists are in neighborhood parks. According to this analysis, the city needs to add 23.1 acres of neighborhood parks to meet the service level needs of the city for the population estimate. Another example would be trails. So we currently estimate a total inventory of 13.21 miles of trails throughout the city. In order to meet a level of service of 0.4 miles per 1,000, we would have to add an additional two miles of trail throughout the city. And you can see that in the table. Then we looked at future populations, so we can start planning for the future, looking 10 years in the future at 2032 estimated populations. You can see that in many of those categories, the needs don't change, those needs exist, they just increase as population rises. One area where you can see where today we're meeting the standard, but in the future we may not be, would be multipurpose fields, so think like soccer fields. Right now, we're doing well. In the future, we have a need to add a small amount of fields. And if you remember from when we looked at the plan, we did a work session together to work through the capital improvement plan. This list also forms the basis of our SDC methodology, and it really represents the dollars and cents of parks projects over the next 20 to 30 years. It includes additional new parks, the rationale for inclusion, the park type, any land acquisition costs, and any development costs. So then what we did was we worked with planning staff to develop our applicant narrative, and through that, it was recommended by planning that we develop the document that is attached in your packet, which is called the Parks Inventory. It's a list of the existing parks, the type of parks, and descriptions of what type of parks we operate, what our facilities currently look like, and ideas and suggestions of what we would build in the future based on the recommendations of this master plan. So that is actually what is being adopted into the comprehensive plan, and that was created in collaboration with staff. We ran that through PrAC for review, and we're now here to answer any questions that you may have about it. That Parks Inventory represents the narrative of that capital improvement. So the CIP that was in the plan is the dollars, the Parks Inventory is the narrative. So just the next steps, like Scott mentioned, we had our public hearing with the planning commission yesterday. There were a few questions, but they did recommend moving forward with the process, and the first reading of the Complan Amendment is currently scheduled for your agenda on May 21st.
Tom or Scott, could you also just give them an update on kind of the parallel process, which is the system development charge, update component to implement the plan?
Yeah, so concurrently with this work, we've been working with our consultants, Galardi Rothstein, to update the SDC methodology. The SDC methodology represents how we raise money for this capital improvement plan. If you look at the slides, you'll see that there's capacity units on there. What that work, it represents is our ability to grow in these areas, what is SDC eligible and what is not. So we've identified that through our SDC methodology, what we can pay for using with SDCs. This level of service analysis goes into that SDC methodology. It looks at where need exists, where growth can help pay for that. And ultimately, that helps funding a portion of these CIPs. The remainder would be things that we would seek to do with grants or other funding opportunities.
And Tom, I'll just add that we're going to be bringing that, the SDC methodology to you. Right now, we're planning on, I think it's June 18th, for approval adoption.
I think the commission probably remembers we walked through the SDCs, looked at it. This is just meeting the statutory requirements for noticing at the public hearing before it comes back for consideration.
Where are we going in terms of futures discussions in the very near future about us going out for a park spot? I know the SDCs aren't going to cover anything, but considering that this is, you know, in terms of, you know, livability, this is a big L. People want and want and want, you know, I constantly hear about more dog parks, and I said, you know, we have to have a way to fund them. We have to have a way to support not only those, but other things that people want, and we can't be all things to all people, and that's what I try to explain to people. We are looking at how our parks facilities serve our residents. We're not trying to serve everybody else. If they want to come and enjoy, fine, but the purpose of our master planning is to look at what the needs are of our community. We have, you know, being the county seat, we have all of these, you know, everything that we have seems to get used by people who do not help pay the freight. And that's fine, but we have to come up with another way to not only support our park system, but support the maintenance that we know that all the parks deserve. So I just want to know how we're, how soon we're going to be getting to that discussion.
Well, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yes, we know that the needs and the wants of the community certainly are far in excess of what we have in terms of funding, both in terms of development and maintenance. So yes, we, I'm not sure of the timeline yet. We're beginning to have, I know those conversations have been happening, and that's certainly something that's a priority for me as I've, you know, gotten back on board here and looking at that. So we'll be having those conversations and hopefully developing some idea around, you know, other funding sources to support this and whether that, you know, is viable or palatable for you as, as the governing body, but also for the community. And so yes, we'll be engaging in, in some of that, you know, looking ahead, and that's on my priority. I can't tell you an exact timeline, but it's, it's, that's, you know, we're working on that for sure, so.
Maybe this question is further down the road, but the question that always comes up in my mind, if you look at that CIP list, for example, the priority order, is that like a separate process? Once, you know, here's our, here's our wish list, how do we turn that into reality? Who, who's making the decisions on, you know, what we go after first?
So I think, you know, I'm just going to reiterate, you know, as part of the commission goal setting for 2025 through 2027 included some of these topics we're talking about right now, including, we talked a little bit earlier about the end of the Oregon Trail, but also the Oregon City Pool, right? Setting aside, how do we, you know, what is that going to be in the future, right? Increased community engagement, education, and outreach about the need for new funding sources to maintain, update, and expand parks and recreation facilities. So those are two of the goals. So I think what we're working on is just what the timing of that is as we get through the SDC adoption, the master plan adoption, and then rolling these into the 25, 27 goals, and we'll be providing updates on what we think that looks like. But then another one that we added was trying to create a five-year Parks Capital Improvement Plan that prioritizes. So I think that would kind of be, I think what you're looking for, kind of like, okay, we've got this list, right? And it's a 20-year look. What's, you know, what is, you know, kind of a five-year plan look like? Realizing, right? Like even with PMU, right? For pavement maintenance, right? We have our plan, but it's like, oh, sometimes these opportunities arise that might not be in that five-year plan, but it's like, oh my gosh, we've got, you know, some different funding opportunity, or we've got to go in and replace a water main, so while we're in there, we might as well do the sewer, and then we got to pave, you know? So I mean, I think it serves as a better guide, but it's not necessarily, you know, hopefully we implement it the way we hope, but, you know, just realizing there is some flexibility. But, you know, just realizing there is some flexibility in that depending on opportunities.
Yeah.
In particular, I'm thinking, you know, when you look at that CIP list, there's a section in the middle of the page of, you know, whether it's replacing a restroom at a park or, you know, there's, what is it, $10 to $12 million worth of that stuff, I think, as I recall. So, you know, so where do we start on that?
So, yeah, great. I was going to add to what Tony said that, and this goes to your question. We are engaging the PRACT with helping us to, you know, look at that list and actually help us develop those priorities and actually, you know, put it in a prioritization order. So we're going to begin that process with them actually next week. Our next PRACT meeting is a week from Thursday, and it's on the agenda. So we'll begin that conversation to engage, engage that group.
And I think, you know, another interesting, another interesting part of that will be, you know, how does that then play into, like, we know we have a state parks grant cycle, right? We know we have, you know, a local share from Metro, right? I mean, there's, there are these funding sources out there, right? And, you know, how does that eventually tie into thinking about how some of these get taken down? When you start to think about what are those alternative funding sources that we're going to need, especially to offset the unfunded component of the capital and maintenance program, right? So, you know, I think it'll be, you know, getting through that five-year CIP kind of prioritization. You know, like I said, I think in my mind, I'm imagining it's very similar to what we do for the pavement maintenance utility fee, right? We have our five-year plan. We know kind of where we're going to be. We kind of know what the funding available is, you know what I mean? So it does give us a prioritization to try to target, you know, our worst CPI roads first and then prioritize those. Or it also helps with, like I said, the biggest one is just trying to coordinate all the utility and infrastructure improvements that have to happen. Ideally, trying to avoid the situation where we pave a road and you got to come back and rip it up for something, right? So, you know, as much lead time as we can get to kind of identify the funding for the other things that go into that would be helpful. And I think parks is similar, but maybe a little less complicated in that we're dealing with parks and trying to find funding, not necessarily lining up not only our utilities, but all the private utilities and everything else that's in our rights of way.
Really glad to hear that PRACT is going to be part of that process. Thank you for that.
Key point that throughout this process, we can be nimble because if an opportunity comes up, we don't definitely want to, we don't want to pass it up if it's something that's going to be, you know, beneficial. I know that, you know, nobody envisioned that Lattarette Park was going to turn into the process that we had, but it was an opportunity that came up that, you know, we have, we have something that's really great to, you know, show for that. So it's, it's one of those things. And I do appreciate the fact that there's an aspirational list. And I think on page three of the memo that we should have a little asterisk for one of those aspirational items. But one of the things that I was noticing too, just in the slides. So what is our, and it's very minor, but what is our plan to upgrade the signage? So the one that showed for, I think, was it Hillendale in this slide? It's, let me see if I can get, pull it up here. Nope, it was, no, the, that's an old sign. That's not, that's not one of the, it's green, but it's, it had, yeah, it's Hazel Grove. So I know that's the new signage that we're going to. And so what is the plan to make the signs consistent? Because that was the goal, was to make sure that, you know, you see that and you know that that's a, that's a city park. We have one at Tyrone Woods and some of the newer parks. But are, do we have like one or two a year that we're going to upgrade or?
Yeah, so we, we've been working on updating them when they kind of deteriorate, when they get to the point of replacement. We go in and we work to replace them. The newest one that we'll be doing is at Supportcraft Landing. So we've got the parts ordered, everything's ready. We're putting that together with our current budget. I think one to two a year is probably a good estimate. It's just dependent upon budget. It kind of goes back to that comment about the.
So just as a rough estimate, what is the new signage? What's the approximate cost?
I think with install, the new one at Supportcraft is somewhere in the $8,000 range.
But I mean, it's bigger, though. I mean, the one here that shows here for Hazel Grove, like, that's the standard size that we're going to be using. So what, what's the cost of that?
Yeah, somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 for.
That's a lot for a sign. I mean, they look great. I mean, I.
That's, that's including staff time for install, too. That's including just the hours.
I noticed particularly when I go through Lake Oswego, all of their park signs are fairly consistent in other jurisdictions. And I know that we're trying to get there. And I think that's real important because, again, it's, it's that visual reminder that, you know, this is a, you know, city park. And I noticed the one that Singer Creek Park, as I come down Lynn Avenue all the time, I think, yeah, we need to replace that one, so. So without the staff time, what's the cost of the sign?
Like I said, I don't have the number in front of me. I'm trying to remember.
Get that to me.
Okay, yep. Yeah, we've got, we've got a very recent one that we're doing. It's Supportcraft, so I can send you the numbers.
And is it larger than?
It's about the same size. It's a, it's a little, it should actually be a little cheaper because it's a pre-made kit for the side. Those ones were actually custom made by staff in-house with, you know, the.
The Hazel Grove sign?
Yes. The signs, the signs were manufactured. The frame around it was constructed in-house. You know, they bought the wood, they bought the posts.
Yeah, well, it looks, it looks really good.
They are.
It looks, it's very simple, but it's very professional.
Yeah.
And it gets, you know, gets the point across and what's going on there. And I've noticed that, it looks good. It's really good. Anything else? Go ahead.
Let Adam have a chance to come on to say something before I send this into the ditch.
Are you in the ditch?
What, no, well, I'm probably going to send this there.
Okay, everybody hold on.
So I'm wondering about the narrative that we're going to adopt with park by park, which I think looks great. I have to bring up Buena Vista Club. I, I think there's an assumption in here that we have not had a discussion about as a commission. We had a work session on the topic, but we've never reached any decision. And, and this is saying that future development would be focused on preservation of the existing structure. And I don't think we've had that discussion.
I didn't hear the first part, so I'm sorry. But I'm looking at your face, I have a strange feeling what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking about the assumption that's in here about what we do with the Buena Vista Club house. And I don't think we've had that discussion.
Building, not a house anymore.
Pardon?
It's not a house anymore. It was, it's a building.
Right.
I think during the discussion at the meeting next week, you know, if that can be a topic. I mean, realistically, the ability to spend money on there is going to come to the commission as well. So I think without clear direction, you know, it's, it's a facility and we own it. And so I guess we're not, you know, we, we put it in because it is one of our, it's not our decision to make to demo the building or remove it or not fund it or not prioritize it or to prioritize it. So, yeah, I appreciate the direction. If we get there, realizing, you know, this has gone back and forth over the years. So we didn't really feel it was our place to, to make that call.
Well, we're not in the ditch, but the caveat is if enough funding can be secured, and I know that there are efforts being made.
That's, that's, that's the second sentence.
Yes, to talk about.
If enough funding can be secured, the city should pursue a goal of reopening the building. The sentence before says development should focus on preservation of the existing structure. And, and that's the part that I don't think we've have decided.
Well, get on board then.
Get on board with what?
We've, we've decided not to tear it down. And to the city manager's point, it's a building that we have to.
When did we decide not to tear it down? It's not torn down, I understand, I understand that.
I think there was.
That was the original plan. So that was stopped, and so, you know, that decision was made.
I think there was some discussion about trying to raise funds.
You're right, there hasn't been a conversation about the city, you know, opening it up or, or putting money towards it. But it is a building that we have to maintain in this city. I mean, it's, we, we can't neglect to the point that it's getting worse. We wouldn't do that to any other building in the city. We wouldn't do it to that. Even in our buildings that are in poor condition, we're not neglecting. You don't think we should take care of our buildings, regardless of whether they're going to?
I think we should certainly take care of our buildings if we think they have any practical use.
So we stop maintaining, I assume we still think Center Street is a building. We're not, we're not completely divesting ourselves of taking care of that or watching it. And it's, it's of no use, we're going to sell it eventually. So I mean, while we have these buildings in place, it's still city property, we still have an obligation to keep an eye on it. I'm not saying we've, we clearly haven't put any effort to put extra money towards it, but it's a city facility nonetheless. And as it sits there, it's still something we have to deal with.
So let's put that on pause, and we'll have more discussion about that. So we will be reviewing the Parks Master Plan on the 21st and adopting it as an ancillary document to the city's comprehensive plan. So that's our next steps. All right, let's move on to agenda item, the next agenda item. Go back to my agenda.
List of future work sessions.
Yes, I'm, I'm on it, I just couldn't remember what number it was. Item 3A.
All right, so we put together, we believe, the first meeting, the first commission meeting in June. Right now, we do not have urban renewal, so this might slide. We would take that six o'clock time slot to have a discussion on the McLaughlin Promenade encroachments, following up on the kind of site visit that we did. If urban renewal ends up going on June 4th, we'll slide this, probably to that June 10th work session. For June 10th, we're looking at code enforcement amendments. I think Chief Davis has talked about shopping carts and open flames.
Could you just remind me about the open flame thing again?
Do you want to come up and talk a little bit, Sean? I think it was clar, providing a little bit more clarity about how it can be enforced.
Isn't that why we're having a work session on it?
Well, we're going to find out here in about a minute.
Yes, coming up with the ordinance for open flames on property. So we're concerned with the fire hazards near the, down in the canyon. We've had some calls where some businesses, someone had started a fire, warming fire. They called. We've tried to go through the court process for reckless burning, but since nothing was actually damaged, there's nothing they, they can do. So it's kind of like allowing people to burn. We've got a bunch of different, a small area of DEQ that has some permitting areas. So we're going to bring something forward and discuss some of the different options that are out there and see if the commission's interested in adopting that.
I'm, I'm trying not, I'm, I'm trying not to have an out-of-body experience, which, why would we allow to have, have people light fires in town? I mean.
Well, that's currently, they can. There's not much we can do for enforcement. The Fire Department can enforce it with this new ordinance. It would allow them to possibly get a fine if the Fire Department wants to. So currently, unless they damage some.
What do you mean, if they want to?
It'll give the, the Fire Marshal and the Fire Department authority to be able to enforce some of the stuff that they can't enforce currently. So we'll bring in the information from the Fire Marshal on all that. But yeah, currently, unless they damage property or injure someone, say it's an arson or reckless burning, there's nothing that we can really do besides maybe go out there and try to put it out. So there's no enforcement action that we can take.
So bear with me when I ask the stupid question. So by the fact that they've lit the fire, to me, that's damaging property?
One could argue that, but unless there's actual physical dollar monetary damage, if it's just an inside of the sidewalk and there's no damage to the property, it is reckless. It could cause a damage, but maybe we get it put out before. There's nothing that we can do for enforcement. There's case law and stuff like that. So we're trying to bring something back that it's not going to. Also, if people have some large outdoor fires, right? We got to, it's going to be written in a certain way. So we're going to bring it back to you guys to see if you guys are even interested in bringing this forward as an ordinance.
Oh, I am totally, we should not be having people light fires anywhere in town that, that's open. I mean, it's, that is just ludicrous to me that we don't have any way to enforce that.
That's the point of what he's going to bring forward.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just not understanding why that isn't.
Why don't we have it already?
Exactly. Seems to me it comes right under, you know, DEQ and, you know, other stuff, although we know how their enforcement is, which is pretty much zero. Go ahead.
You have to then address any special event or permit that would include living history encampments, salmon bakes, et cetera, that all is similar. So you can't just flat out say no in the city unless you're accounting for all those things. And that obviously, you know, I don't know how many of those events happen at the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretives anymore, Center anymore, but I know of a salmon bake at least coming up, I think. I know of past events with living history where there's been campfires in city parks. I know city parks that have fire pits. So there, it's a bigger can of worms than you think.
And there's, people can have open flames in their backyard, right? So we got to be very creative and careful not to, it's, it's to stop some of the dangers that could spread wildfire, especially with what we've seen in the canyon down in Newell Creek, right? We've seen it down on the, on the urban renewal down by the river. We've had fires there. So we're trying to get to a place where we can actually enforce this and hopefully keep our, our community safe.
Let's get to it. I think I already know the issue with the shopping cart, so.
Yeah, and we'll have more for that. But there's a lot of cities around us that already have that ordinance. So we're just trying to come up with an ordinance that if the commission's interested.
Yep, go for it.
The next item would be, the commission had asked about, just have a discussion about the Community DEI Task Force and what that might look like moving forward. So we would add that as well. And then we're still trying to work on putting together a meeting with the representatives from Confederate Tribes of Grand Ronde. Any questions?
Yeah, maybe it would happen, we were trying to have it happen this spring, and which, they want to do it during the day. So. Their meeting, they want us to come out there. So. You get excused from school.
Then let's do it in the summer.
Well.
We're almost there.
We're close. Hey.
Okay.
Additional items.
So we just have some of the updates on city projects. Provided some information on the relocation from Center Street. Just, we're working through the 25, 27 budget, which included funding for the DECAN facility, magnesium chloride and sanding rock facilities that need to be located from Center Street to another location. Just continue to work with ODOT and the consultant for the Quiet Zone. Uh, we did add that funding as well, potentially to be able to utilize during the 25-27 budget cycle. Um, Charter Parks, just talked about, we're bringing that back for a discussion related to the McLaughlin Promenade and the encroachments that exist there. Um, Caius 5 Memorial, there's really no new update there, um, still, um, supporting-
Still not made any context.
Still supporting the conversations between the Confederate Tribes of Yumitala and the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ronde. And Courthouse, uh, the County Commission is reviewing the proposal for the reuse of the courthouse and is currently accepting public comment. Uh, this, the county's provided the following information. The Board of County Commissioners will hear public testimony on Thursday, May 15th regarding a selection advisory committee's recommendation on proposal to redevelop the old county courthouse. Um, Level Development Northwest proposal was the only one received during a extensive request for expressions of interest process. Uh, the proposal will replace the D7 year old courthouse with a mixed-use commercial building, which includes approximately 80 residential units, won the committee's approval. Uh, so they are currently accepting that public comment uh, prior to their business meeting on Thursday, May 15th at 10 a.m. And Tamwana Village, um, nothing really new there. Uh, you did receive public comment, I think two meetings ago, about a homeless encampment, um, down in that area. We were able to confirm that it is located on, uh, Confederate Tribes of Grand Ronne property. So PD has been working with them to begin addressing, um, that homeless camp on that property. Uh, and then nothing new on the Kenebera subway.
Have they said anything about cleanup of their water tower site there on High Street?
No, they have not.
It's full of Scotch brew.
Any questions for me?
Okay, let's move on, we're close to the end. Alright, um... Item 5, um, why don't we start with, uh, you, Commissioner Merle, Citizen Involvement Committee and Youth Advisory?
Yeah, so at our last CIC meeting, uh, we had a conversation, uh, that was prompted by a couple members who wanted to explore the feasibility of establishing a land use committee for the Citizen Involvement Committee. Um, and we did have staff there to talk about what that could look like and why that would possibly be difficult. Just given what we, as a city, have charged them to do, um, in their bylaws and, and everything that we've approved, it, which it currently is not included in that. Um, in addition to the fact that there are two planning commissioners and a historic review board member who are on the CIC, which complicates the whole ex parte contact issue as well. Um, I do understand, and I told them that I understood, uh, where they were coming from because the White Lane development that we had a meeting on a couple, a month or two ago, a couple weeks ago, um, that actually went to the CIC because the Neighborhood Association, where it currently is, is not up and running yet. Um, and so, as part of the public engagement process, they are charged with hearing from the developers as a CIC if there is no active Neighborhood Association. And so they did hear from that developer and they felt as though, um, it was more of a, you know, a, a check on the checklist and that they didn't really have their voices heard. And I communicated to them that, that's pretty much how we feel too. Um, there, I mean, really, it is an opportunity for us to have a heads-up about what's going to happen and voice our concerns. But even at the City Commission level, I communicated to them that we really don't have much leeway to, to say what we would like to see in it either if it follows all of our, our codes and regulations. So, that's what we had our larger conversation around at CIC. Um, C4, our last C4 meeting was, uh, during a Budget Committee meeting. And so I wasn't able to make it and I still need to go back and watch the recording. Um, an agenda item of notes, uh, that's related to what we discussed tonight. Uh, there is an agenda item titled "Transportation Safety: What Can We Do?" So maybe you might be interested in, uh, going back and seeing that presentation as well, but I'm going to, uh, do that and I can report back, uh, after that. And then we had Youth Advisory last night. Uh, we've got one more meeting, uh, before the summer and, uh, and they're all taking a break. Um, th- so we're currently in the middle of recruitment. Uh, the mayor is going around to different schools. And we're also having our current students go around to the different schools with a heavy emphasis on the middle schools to try and get some incoming freshmen, um, recruited, uh, and applying. And then, um, we also discussed an opportunity for some students to come to the Capitol. For some of them, this will be their third time, just this year, coming to the Capitol, um, to advocate for various things. They've been able to come visit me in my office and it has been a really, uh, rewarding experience, I think, for them, uh, to tackle their, one of their priorities, which is the, um, flavored tobacco, uh, ban conversation that's going on at the state level. So, that is what I have for my committee reports.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would concur with your comments regarding the CIC. With our neighborhoods back up, running, I, I, I really don't see them having a land use role. We have a planning commission, we have neighborhood associations. I don't really feel that that's, that's their role. And, you know, as you stated, we have the whole issue of, you know, clear and objective standards and, um, you know, that's, that's what we need to do, so... Mike?
Uh, okay, so C4 Metro, uh, about the only thing hap- that happens at those meetings is, uh, updates on the reasonable, reasonable, flexible fund allocation. Which is an ongoing battle, uh, because obviously there's way more requests than there's available funds. Our project, it's on the list, uh, that's the one, the, the McLaughlin enhancements. Um, it's, it's on the list, but it did not score well. So I think the opportunity of that getting funded in that 28 to 30 cycle is probably pretty slim. Um, and that's about all there is there. South Fork Water Board, uh, we adopted new SDC charges, uh, at a previous meeting. And our last meeting, uh, was our budget meeting and we adopted the, uh, next biennium's budget for South Fork. There is, there is a modest increase in there. And, uh, the goal in the, in the short term is to, uh, get some of the construction projects done that have a, have a real impact on the resilience of the system. For example, the, the raw water line that comes up the hill from the river, uh, and is, uh, a single point of failure if that was to go down, that there's no backup to get water up to the treatment plant. So that's very high up on the list. So those kind of projects are taken priority. Uh, and it is, as I said, it's a modest increase. And, uh, I've said this at the South Fork meetings and I've said it here, when, when you look at your, um, property tax bill, or excuse me, at your utility-
Utility bill.
At your utility bill, the, the raw water charge is the best value on the page. It's amazing, really, how little we pay for the water supply. Moving it around is the expensive part. And honestly, the most expensive part is getting rid of it after it leaves your house. So, that's it for me.
So the, uh, Arts Commission, uh, met last month and they are in the process of, uh, doing a little event called "Art for Every Heart" contest. It's for Oregon City students, grades K through 12. And, uh, they're basically looking for, um, original piece of art, a painting, a sculpture, a new song or a dance, um, use the words for "Art for Every Heart" in your entry. And those are due, um, by the 21st. They're planning on having an event over at the Art Light upstairs from the Hive. That will happen. The, well, you know what's going on with the courthouse. Um, I did attempt to go to their meeting where they were going to have a policy discussion. And, um, unlike us, when we advertise a meeting at a certain time, that's when we have it. And myself and a half a dozen other people showed up at 20 minutes till 11, when it was supposed to be on the agenda, and they were already gone. So, there were some unhappy campers, including myself. Um, and I will, when I have my meeting with the city administrator, I'm going to bring up that point. Cause that's happened to me more than once. They don't stick to some kind of schedule, so how are people supposed to plan? I, I just said, you know, I don't have time to sit there all day and wait till you get to that item. Clackamas Water Environmental Services, we're going through the budget. There's a budget hearing coming up with the commissioners, I forgot when it is, but it's, I have to be there, so I don't, I can't remember. It's either first week in June, I believe. We do have our next meeting on the 15th and I've already indicated to staff that I will not be able to attend because we have our budget meeting that night. And I told them that from, uh, the beginning. But, uh, we made a, and I wish I could have it in front of me, cause I could tell you, we made a modest change to their typical, you know, here's the new SDC fees, everybody rubber stamps it and move on. We actually bifurcated it and changed it, so it's not going to be as high. Um, myself and several other members of the cities brought up the fact that their rates are very high, they're very much ahead of where they need to be on their SDCs and, uh, putting in improvements. So I don't think this is going to hurt them. That was pretty, we did have some no votes, but the majority of the board basically said this is gonna be the recommendation. So I think that's the first time they've not adopted a staff recommendation, which I was, like, shocked. I have not been to any of the, you, you can do the DED MO when you get to it. Uh, the Downtown Association is meeting this Friday. Uh, we're, um, I'm on, in the nominations committee and so we have two potential applicants to, uh, who are interested in being on the board. The, as you know, the planning is in full swing for the First City Festival, which is on the 26th of July, from 11 to 6. And, uh, that's going well so far, as far as I know. Uh, Impact, um, we are meet, we, uh, meet again on, um, next Thursday. And a couple of the big issues have to do with the Regional Solid Waste Plan. Um, I'm on that ad hoc board and basically my comment about that is, they have a plan. They have beat the citizen involvement part of it to death and they need to move on with getting the plan adopted and getting these, um, small satellite, uh, facilities out in the counties, county areas where they're not facilities. I mean, we're very fortunate, we have all the facilities here, although our site is too small. And I've urged them to get back on track with finding an alternative site to move the commercial, um, operations out of, of Metro South. Uh, you already gave the report on South Fork Water Board. Willamette Falls, uh, Landings and Heritage Area Coalition is meeting on Monday. We have had our first meeting in Old City Hall. And the Clackamas Cities Meeting, which I believe is the 22nd, is meeting there. And did you get an, are you come, are we all coming to that?
Which one?
Uh, the Clackamas Cities Meeting. City of West Lynn is hosting, you should have gotten a notice from Jacob some time ago about that date. It's, um, you look, I believe, yeah, I believe it's the 22nd. Um, there's a pre-tour of Out to the Falls, if you want to see that. I'm, I'm not gonna go on it because I thought other people should have the opportunity to, to go walk out there. Uh, but the meeting is gonna be at Old City Hall. I believe that the city will be, um, just highlighting, showcasing that as well as the Willamette Falls, uh, Landings and Heritage Area Coalition, which has their offices there now. So, um, they haven't quite opened it up to the public yet, but we're getting there. So there should be a lot of space, yeah, that, yeah. It's at, um, 5:30 to 7:00. So I think if you want to go, um, let Evan or Jacob know and they can get you registered for it. I think you're going, you're going, I'm going. I don't think Scott will be back, uh, from his vacation, cause he's gonna be out all week, so he may or may not go. But I think it's worthwhile. The interesting thing is the speaker is going to be Kate Brown, talking about what the Willamette Falls Trust is doing, so, you know, bring your popcorn. Willamette Falls Locks Authority, we have been in Salem several times to testify on the, um, Locks Bill, the bonding capacity. It has passed out of transportation, it's now in the Finance Committee. And, uh, strong support for it, um, from our sponsor, one of our sponsors, which is Senator Meek. We have sponsorship from Representative Hartman and a number of others. It was, uh, fun going up there and, and talking with them about, you know, what we're doing and how we're moving forward. I think, last but not least, it's not one of our specific committees, but some of you know that, um, I've been convening, um, meetings infrequently about the, uh, it's called the Shelter Advisory Committee. And we have, we're gonna be having another meeting in a couple of weeks involving Father's Heart, just because it's time to touch base again and there's some issues that the neighborhood wants to bring up. So we have the city, uh, excuse me, the Neighborhood Association and them, we have a Good Neighbor Agreement. And, uh, that has worked fairly well, uh, so far. The communication has continued to improve. But, you know, there's always those little, little things that keep coming up. So we are grateful that we have some good partnerships with that. I think, just a quick question between you two on C4. And I asked our, um, trustworthy, wonderful park, uh, library director. I still am puzzled by the fact that, um, C4 primarily deals with transportation, but somehow they made recommendations with regard to the library task force that's starting up again, their first meeting is, is June the 11th. And I'm just puzzled as to why it went to C4.
If I may?
Yeah, if you, if you know, I just, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just curious, it's just weird, you know?
We, we use C4 as an opportunity to have, uh, a city's caucus, is what they call it. Uh, just informally, we do that, um, for a variety of, uh, advisory committees and bodies um, that require city consensus on one or two cities to represent all of Clackamas County. And so even though libraries are not what we focus on, it's basically like, well, this is the only time when all the cities are together to have a discussion about who they would like to send, that, that then becomes the forum. That's how we decided who would represent us on the RTAC, the Regional Toll Advisory Committee. So there are a variety of, um, bodies where we've had those informal conversations, uh, aside from the county commissioners and the, 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 uh, CPOs in the sanitary districts, so...
Yeah, it just seemed like a big stretch to me. Um, unfortunately, Oregon City is not represented on that group, which unfortunately is not good for us in terms of, uh, the whole issue with the, you know, the taxing district and, and also our service area. I mean, we, we carry the brunt of, uh, library services as well as does the City of Milwaukee and they are not represented, represented either. Uh, we have Gladstone, which just got a new library, you know, at, you know, very little cost to them, and so I'm sure they think everything is fat and happy, but it's not. And then there's the library coming online again, which makes no sense to me. We've got the library in Gladstone, one in Milwaukee, and then we have one in the unincorporated area that was too close to Gladstone. Anyway, that's a whole nother story. Anyhow, so we will have people there from our city, um, uh, inputting, uh, as, as not participants, so we'll see how that goes. Other than that, um, Metropolitan Mayor's, uh, group is meeting again on Thursday. And we've been, basically, the tact from that group has been following the legislative process and, uh, opposing many of the bills that are gonna try to put the hammer on us. Um, I was just talking to Adam about SB 974, which, uh, is proposing to shorten the time that we have to review land use applications, getting rid of the 120-day thing. Um, basically, you know, saying, "Oh, you've got 45 days to review something." I, I just, I, I, you know, I don't know who the sponsors are, but I have to look the bill up again. I'm just completely dismayed by the, by the lack of comprehension about the land use process and, you know, again, as you made, very eloquently made the statement, you know, they're just throwing everything out there and if we only had this thing taken away, then we could do more development. And it's just not, the two things are not mutually exclusive to each other and they don't, it doesn't work, so... Anyway, um, shall we adjourn? Oh, sorry, I forgot you, yes, my friend, sorry.
Um, so I did attend the, uh, DMO Destination Marketing Imagine Organization meeting and-
How was it?
Um, it was good, it was very good. It was, um, basically, um, a lot of discussion on how to get started and move, move, um, forward. So talking about how to set up the bank account and what, what the process was gonna be for that. Um, how to, um, starting the process and discussing the process on how to search for an executive director and what the possible compensation ranges might be for that. Our Economic Development Director, um, answered a lot of questions on what the city would continue to pay for, for the DMO and what they wouldn't. There was lots of questions about that. Um, there is, um, he did a good job of that.
Could you send out-
That we weren't gonna be paying for their dinner moving forward, things, you know, like that. And, um, they did get a tour of their-
Healthcare, what?
Benefits.
The DMOs?
No.
What?
They did get a tour of their very, very tiny office that they have access to. Um, is that for the first year? Was that for the, is the, uh, the office space was for the first year?
Two years.
Two years, okay, for the first cycle. So that was pretty much it and, um, but it was a good, good start there, moving forward and working towards getting that process started for searching for the executive director. Um, the CHP meeting, Clackamas Harris Partners, we just had, so you experienced- The CHP meeting, Clackamas Harris Partners, we just had, so you experienced that, I don't need to talk about that. And other than that, I attended the courthouse ribbon cutting, which was pretty cool. Huge building, amazing building. And I, the one thing that stood out to me, I did walk at least to each floor, but as you got to the higher floors, there was less and less people, and so you were like, I don't know if I'm supposed to be walking around here or not.
Where the big courtroom.
But it was, it was, I peeked in a couple doors. It's massive, but as you walk in, the artwork is pretty prevalent throughout the building. I think it's really amazing, some of the pieces of art in the building representing a lot of history and, and the native story as well. The thing that caught my attention above everything else was the Lady Justice, the statue from the courthouse being prominent in display in the main lobby. Incredible history, and so it's worth checking that out.
I got a special tour, because I asked for it, because I couldn't be at the, at the other one, but I noticed that the, there's lovely artwork from the Grand Ron, but it, they did not invite apparently other tribes. I think that would have, that's a little bit of a mistake. They should have had more representation. But the other artwork by just, you know, non-native people is very nice, and there's a stunning view from the sixth floor. I will say that I would not want to be the janitorial staff, there is so much glass that they're going to be constantly going through there with their wind decks, cleaning everything, the panels to keep you from falling off the edge of the floor, all glass. And, you know, it's going to be, that's going to be there, but I got to see a lot of the courtrooms. I got to go into one of the judges' offices, they weren't there, and, yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to be, the security is better, which is, which is going to be good. There's, you know, checkpoint when you walk in the door, just like they have now, at least a little more sophisticated. There are rooms for people to meet with their attorney, which they didn't have before they were meeting out in the hallway. Some of the electronics, I mean, heaven forbid the whole thing would go down, because everything is tied to access in the internet. But probably my one concern about the building is the fact that it is directly adjacent to one of our neighborhoods, and I hope that the county will be conscientious about not having all the lights on, on that side, so that people aren't, can go, can't go outside and read in their backyard, because when they were doing the construction, it was really bright. And there's not really any, much screening going on back there. I mean, it wouldn't be, because I mean, it's what, six stories or whatever, but. And massive parking lot, I didn't see a whole lot of vegetation in the parking lot, even though I know we require trees. I wish they had planted some bigger foliage, because it's just asphalt everywhere. They are putting back in a little community cafe like they have in 250, or, excuse me, 150 Beaver Creek Road, that's going to be reinvigorated, and also the, they're going to have a place for people, but, you know, it's going to be the typical stuff, you know, sandwiches and stuff like that. But again, they have the ability, I guess, to walk offside. The jury room is much better if you've served on a jury.
It's huge.
Jury lately. And there are ADA accessible bathrooms everywhere, which is, which is good. So I thank staff very profusely for taking me through. They're slowly but surely moving in, so.
Yeah. Don't we have code related to light spill over onto adjacent properties?
Yeah, it's, it's one, I think I can't remember off the top of my head, I think it's, there's a foot candle measurement at the property line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Anyway.
Quick, can I ask Commissioner Smith a quick question?
Sure.
Does the DMOMO have a timetable on advertising for an executive director?
Would you send us the, the announcement for qualifications? Because, you know, all of us run into people all over the place, and we could send it out to some of our own personal networks.
I don't think they set a specific schedule, but James might have.
The, the executive directors, the consultants are putting together a improvement motion.
Okay. And then it's scheduled.
So no, no real-time people yet?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Do we plan on hiring, having them hired by September, October? What, what do you think?
September.
Now, that's a fast track turnaround. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.